Or the meeting's order is six ten P M. Full talk please.
President Hernandez. Vice President Estes. Trustee Altamirano. Trustee Banda. Trustee Sotomayor.
We have a call. Trustee Atamirama, can you lead us in the flesh?
Adjustments to the agenda. The library board will discuss the order of the agenda. May amend the order at urgency items, no extensions or no votes on consent calendar items. And request consent calendar items to be removed from the consent calendar for discussion. The library board may also remove items from the consent calendar prior to that portion of the agenda. The library board may take care of these issues for official city record purposes by entertaining a formal motion. Public comment. Anyone wishing to address the library. Yeah, the library board on these matters has a limit of three minutes. Do we have any? None, okay. Matters not appearing on the agenda. If you wish to address a library board concerning any item within the board's jurisdiction, please raise your hand and be acknowledged by the president. At that time, state your name and address for the record. The president reserves the right to place a time limit of three minutes on each person's presentation. It is requested that longer presentations be submitted to library administrator's office in writing forty eight hours before the meeting. Alright, moving on to a consent agenda. Approval of minutes for the regular library board meeting of September ten twenty twenty four. We have them here. Do we have any motion?
Make a motion to approve.
I second.
A motion and a second. Do we have to vote? Okay.
Let's do roll.
Trustee Altamirano.
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez.
Yes.
And trustee Sotomayor.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Motion passes three zero.
Item B, work session discussion recommendation. Item B one Gilmore girl. Gilmore Girls Day event. Gilmore, it's a it's a mouthful. Gilmore Girls Day Library Event. Uh presenter, we don't have a vice president Estes, so trustee Sotomayor please.
Okay. I. Well, I think we're pretty much prepared. I went over it um with uh Amber, so we leveled down the activities we're supposed to do. Uh we made sure that we didn't overextend ourselves because it's from three to seven and. Um you know, just try and make it simple, so I believe that will be on the top of the list. We do, what is it? The um. The coffee pastries in one section and they'll decorate the sleeves uh for Luke's coffee. And then um we'll move on to the Miss Paige. Is it Paige, a ballet time for the kids? So we'll encourage, you know, little girl, little kids uh to dress up in their tutus. They'll do a story time with um, is it Elise, Elise?
Um, no, with Paige.
With Paige, okay, so she's gonna be doing, okay. And then I.
Actual ballet teacher.
Oh, okay, and then they're gonna be showing um those old movies like Attack of the Fifty Foot Woman and um Pepe Longstocking. Cause I guess they show uh movies like that in the show. And then the last thing will be Rory's Corner where we'll have a bunch of uh classics on display as well. And will they be decorating a bookmark or did?
They'll receive a bookmark that has um where they can log all the books that they can read. So there'll be Rory's Challenge. And then they can um s- um star like how, you know, how much they like the classic book.
Oh, like a rating?
A rating, yeah, thank you. And then um we'll have journals where they can create their own journal with stickers from Gilmore Girls.
Oh, so, yeah.
Sounds a lot of fun. I still haven't watched the show. It's been a few months.
Not either, but I'm just very excited about the coffee and donuts.
Netflix on and see what happens.
And no, I've turned Netflix on and it's come out like suggested for you and I still haven't clicked it. Uh it is, you you know, you know how it is. Alright, so I think things are moving along. I'm excited to see it come to life and I hope that I get to see it in person. That'll be fun. Alright. Um, item B two is Friends of the Library and that one is going to be presented by myself and trustee Sotomayor. Um, and so we don't have it in front of us, but uh I did see the. Uh Friends of the Library Toolkit, if you will, um from the A L A. And it has everything, the steps to establish this supporting organization for the library. Um, and I just think it's a really good opportunity for us to establish that it's not gonna be something that gets um. Completed in a month or six months. It's gonna take a lot of time, but I do think it's something that is gonna be able to support us and we're gonna be able to apply for grants. From that organization because it is its own. Um, does any, do you have any things to add or do you have anything to add?
Um, I would, I would just say it's that we're really keen on getting that going. Because we wanna make sure that we have another steady revenue stream to come into the library to, you know, expand on whatever programs that we do have. I know the literacy program has really taken off. Um, the other day I came into the library, how many people did we have in the literacy room we had?
We, it's doing amazing. It um, yeah, it's always a full, full room, so.
So it.
Yeah.
It's, it's knowing that that we're gonna have more of a need and that way we don't have to be um. Exhausting, you know, pulling, like asking the city, you know, to uh move things around the budget so much. But, you know, just to make sure that we, we implement whatever uh steps that we need to make sure that we have. You know, that steady stream coming in to support, you know, the extra programs. Cause it really does look like the community is coming in a little bit more and more and it's amazing to see. Cause I think it dropped off a little bit with, you know, the pandemic and people coming back. And now I feel like it's gonna be ramping up again, so we just wanna make sure that um there's that support for it. And, you know, whatever that we can do to help the library staff, to help um the city uh get the things um in order. You know, to get that done, cause we're, like we said, we're, we're here to try and help you and make sure that the, that budget is, you know.
Yeah, eh, I do remember that at the very beginning when I started serving on this eh board. We watched as part of the training eh one, at, at least one video about the Friends of the Library. And the difference between eh our board and the Friends of the Library. And summarizing, and please correct me if I'm wrong. The Friends of the Library is basically fundraising and organizing events that like a. Kind of involvement with the community, hands-on thing, okay, yeah.
Yeah, it allows you to, like you said, fundraise um and help sustain the operation. Not the, it's not the main. Right, but it is gonna be a supporting to the library. Um, and I know that while the past, I mean, I feel like we've been here more this past month than ever. Um, and so none of the times that we came by have we ever not had a patron in the library. It's been for different, different things. Um, so, you know, whether it's, we, I came in for your birthday. It was uh Johnny Appleseed Day, right? So there was a whole bunch of, you know, I'll call them friends, friends over. Um, and we had, there were doing headbands and they were eating apples with. I don't even know, honestly, it was. It was fun though, it was fun for the kids, but it's like little things like that and like for Gilmore Girl Days, I know um trustee Estes. Uh trust the vice president Estes called me, she's like, hey, do you have a coffee pot? So it'd be nice to just, you know, you have that bucket of money to sustain these extra activities. It's like, oh, we don't wanna pull from the budget for a coffee pot. It's not like it's a thousand dollars, but it's like those little things they can just pull from Friends of the Library to help sustain these things. Then it just gonna make us look better in the long run.
Yeah, and also it, it, it will promote the library on the community more and more. There is a real need eh for the library, as, as you said about the li- literacy program. But also it's like a people will feel, in my opinion, more inclined to come here, not only to get books which else. It's very important, but also just even for socializing.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's, it's a good area for them to come, relax, you know, be with people. And on top of that, we noticed that there were some grants that we can't apply for because they need a nonprofit um to help. Uh, to help uh collaborate, I believe. And so, I mean, obviously, whatever grants come our, come your way for the library to have that. You, you already have the nonprofit set up for it, so it could um allow for those grants to be applied for. Um, cause we did miss, not miss one, but there was one that came up that um. Obviously, there wasn't enough time to see if could collaborate with another non-for-profit that would have helped, like say in the literacy program. All that, it would have been perfect or perhaps help with um some of the activities with the senior citizens, so just wanna make sure, you know.
Yeah.
We, you know, start the process no matter how tedious and long it can be.
And there's so many benefits to it because you do have the opportunity to collaborate with other nonprofits, right, as to use them as a conduit. But then, um, I know we talked about this, Amber, that you're able to uh basically pay a lesser price for items that could be, you know, right? For like our um Tony boxes, for example, you can get a special rate for items that we can use to check out at the library. And get a discount if you have that nonprofit organization, but if you don't, then you can't take advantage of a lot of these things. So I think it's imperative that you, we start the process. It takes as long as it takes and we just use it, you know, in the future, we just kinda set that up. For, for the success later on. So, we'll start the process, I think, we'll see kind of, I, I guess, start looking and what's the first steps and starting.
And of course, work with you on this Dennis, cause you'll be a main part of it, so.
Yeah, then we'll, we'll, we'll have to look at costs associated with it, if it, to the extent that Friends of the Park. Um, is an example. Costs are somewhere uh north of three thousand dollars uh uh to get the nonprofit in place. And papers filed and all of that sort of thing. Have, and one of those steps has to do with reserving a name. And so I, I, I think we've all been kinda referring to it as Friends of the Library, but uh I, I would be surprised if that isn't taken. Uh, so we might wanna uh look on the Secretary of State website.
Okay.
And s- and um, you might. Uh, email Amber some names and then we can look, we can look them up and see if they're available.
Yeah, okay.
Now, I suppose if, if you wanna say Imperial Friends of the Library or something like that, that might make it unique.
Yeah.
But we'll.
Yeah.
That's what I hear most is just the name of the library.
Right.
Friends of, um, I um do have for trustee Banda and Estes. Um, I went ahead and printed out all of the classes that are available to um. For them to um take, um, just in case they don't have time to look online. Um, so um, there's two of them there if you'd like to go ahead and take them. If someone, um, but what I'll do is I'll look through the list and see if there's any classes specific to Friends Groups. Um, and one of us will attend, you know, we'll, we'll get together and do that. I did identify um our past county librarian that I always referred to. She's ac- actually um. Um, presenting a program about advocacy, so I printed that up for them as well because it's something really important. Um, she just testified um on behalf of the California Library Association. But it just recently happened, I, but it's, it's gonna be a great uh session, so I printed that as well. I'll show it to you after the meeting.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, I mean, it's, it's gonna be a process. It's gonna be a long one, but it's gonna be worthwhile, right?
I, I would recommend um once we start our workshops in January. I think that would be a good time where we start and when we're talking about our mission and our vision, our core values. I think that will lead into creating the Friends Group. Um, we'll have it in our mind and we'll keep watch of everything and start, you know, taking notes and, and every, all of that. Um, but we can really dig in. Um, January is gonna be when we get our shovels out.
Oh, yeah, roll the sleeves up. Let's get to work. Yeah, no, I.
We're, we're working.
We're, we are working, we are blowing up balloons, we are tying things to the wall and we are digging.
Moonstead a great job at the Red Kennedy.
So glad. I am, yeah.
Taking down paw prints.
Oh, yeah. And you thought that, that's gonna be for the report, that's gonna be for the report, it's gonna be so good. We're almost done. Okay. So um we'll table this item, um obviously, we're really gonna get to work to it in January, we'll, we'll look for names. Um, but we will agree to move forward with Friends of the Library. Um, okay. So let's go on to item B three, Library Christmas Project, trustee Sotomayor.
Yes, so this one um is an added on um thing that uh for the library. Uh simply because it's like we, Imperial is known for its Christmas, you know, uh activities. And I'd like to just add a little bit to it, but nothing that requires, you know, too much work, something that is more calm. But uh create some more, you know, memorable and uh. In the community, so um, you know, we have our Christmas parade and everything. But on the day we, I sat with um Amber and we looked at December twentieth, which is a Friday. Um, turn it into a whole day of Christmas at the library. And so some of the ideas that were brainstormed and the good thing is that we have time to uh get some fundraising and support is possibly uh breakfast with Santa. I believe, so we'd reach out to like Denny's or IHOP to see if they would be willing, you know, to come here. And it would be an invite for the community to come and, you know, have breakfast with Santa. We would have someone dress up a Santa Claus and then we would have story.
We would call Santa himself.
Yes, we would call Santa. Because I don't know him. We'll reach out and see if Santa Claus is available. Um, to have breakfast with the community and then um, what is it? Uh, obviously hire an impersonator if we can't get the real thing. And um afterwards, you know, do story time with Santa or if um we have another character. So maybe uh the Nutcracker, um do the story there and then um. Uh, that would also involve, you know, the kids have hot chocolate and candy canes and I'm sure that we can get donations for that as well. And we would have a few um Christmas movies playing. The very classic Chris- Christmas movie playing around um the library. And I think one of them, what, what we were tossing around, we were tossing around the Nutcracker Ballet. Um, the uh, what is the Grinch? I think it is, or what, which ones did we say? I can't remember.
I haven't written down.
Eh, we were looking at, you know, the very classic ones. Yeah, and um. Then possibly like maybe one activity for the kids, like hands-on activity and um. Uh, possibly if it, eh, in brainstorming this, but um taking the idea of like maybe some teddy bears for the kids to take home. And we can certainly get a donation with that, with another um uh volunteer organization. But it's basically just a day for kids, there's gonna be some children that, no, they can't go to the Parade of Lights. Then Christmas in a small town, I mean, some people come out to spend time with their families, but sometimes they can't because lack of transportation. Or because they can't really come and buy anything. Uh, so this is just something for the community, just to let them know that, again, the library is a hub of the city. Just make it, you know, a nice place for everybody, just to come that day right before the holidays, just to give the community a, well, a sense of community. That really, so that, that's it, something nice, something warm, homey, you know, just for everybody.
A community Christmas.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
I, I got, I had an idea and then that idea turned into something else, I don't know if you saw my expression. It evolved a little bit. Because of like an activity, they can write a letter, you know, like their wish list and send it off to Santa, but then I was like, wait, what if they write a letter to the troops? You know how they always say that you write your letter to the troops and then they get something? Is that for, no, that's for Thanksgiving, isn't it?
That could.
Is that a Christmas thing?
Earlier because December twentieth would be a little late.
That would be late. So, yeah, scratch that, we'll figure out an activity, but that, that idea like really was like. But I like that and, you know, we, we, when we were preparing for Red Kennedy, which we'll get to right now. Um, we did have someone tell us that art, there are newer libraries, but our library is homey. And so I think we really need to run with that um and be able to do, you know, like that community Christmas, you know. We, we made some things work with balloons, I think we can really make the library look like Christmas. Don't give us a few hours in the week because.
And, and it would be nice to see if, you know, if maybe the other libraries follow suit. I know that L Central just introduced their literacy program finally, so they, they got their literacy program up and running. And ours had been, you know, going strong, so there is a big need, very big need here. And so I'm hoping some of the other activities that we do and especially the Christmas one will inspire, you know, the other ones to go. Cause creating that whole Christmas spirit within the entire community would be even, you know, better, but knowing that. Imperial's known for it. It, it, it would be nice to, you know.
Yep, between Christmas, look, Parade of Lights and Christmas in a Small Town. Yeah, we definitely do start up Christmas for, I don't even, are we first, are we first for the Christmas parade? No, we're the second.
I think Navy Base is the first Christmas parade.
And then L Central and then us. I'm not sure, I've been out of the parade scene for a little. But I know, you know, that, that, that's when, that's when Imperial really kicks off.
Yeah, and I know that everybody comes into town, uh lord knows with the traffic, it is. They come in just for, you know, these events, so.
It takes you a long time to get home. And Imperial's not that big.
Little town.
Yeah, our little town is bursting, like it looks like Coolville.
Oh, and I forgot on that note, I believe that we got a special donation to the library. If I'm correct, the, a little. We got gifted the. Train, right?
Oh, 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 do you wanna do that for Christmas?
Hey.
Oh, that would be cute.
We can.
I, I, I can, I can um communicate with um city manager and the Parks and Recreation Director.
Okay.
That would, that would be cute.
So we have, oh, did, I don't, do they, I don't think they.
I don't know about this.
No, you, you, everyone knows, there, um, the city owns a, a mini express train.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Um, Yv- Yvonne just thought of.
Yeah, the, using, we can tr- turn it into a little Polar Express, so the kids can.
That would be cute.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll, I'll talk with um Dennis and, and the Parks and Rec Director to see. If that's something that could be worked out. On Friday, on Friday the twentieth. Okay.
Okay, and then on that note with the Christmas parades.
Oh, yeah, I'm ready.
Okay.
I'm like, next Christmas item. Um, so B four Imperial Parade of Lights Participation, so right on, right on subject, right on cue. Um, we are interested in participating in the Parade of Lights. Um, I haven't seen anything come up yet. Um, theme application, none of that, I will keep my eyes peeled. Um, we would love, I mean, it would be a great opportunity for the board to. I don't wanna call it team building, but yeah, let's do that. Um, and we can come together and figure out um participation on the float, but maybe joining forces and seeing what our float should look like. If it's a float, if it's biking, if it walking, I don't know, but I feel like it would be really cute. Um, and just to show a little bit of, of community spirit and like, hey, the light, don't forget about the library, we're here too. Maybe we can add some book elements or, I don't know, we have, it's October, we have two months. We have a month. We have a month to figure this out, but I think it would be really important for um, you know, the library to be there.
I will be happy to collaborate eh, but I have to do that eh before the event. Because I will be out of town from December the thirteen to the twenty, but I can, I'm pretty sure there's plenty to do before.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, President um Hernandez, your vit- the vision um of the participation for the event. We want to highlight our um Board of Trustees for the um.
I am open to highlighting the whole team that makes the library.
Yeah.
Not just us, we, we help, we do this, but there's more than the library to us. Um, so I, I mean, even if I would love to do team building with the staff as well. Um, and so if they are willing to, you know, by all means, if they're like, hey, we don't wanna build, but we'll join you. I am okay with that, you know, that the, the library makes up, it, it's a lot of us. Um, so, no, all of us who make up, all of us who are Imperial Public Library, that's who I want to be highlighted.
Perfect.
I agree with you.
Yeah.
The library thing, not, not.
Oh, no, absolutely, it's a whole library thing.
We will go, we will work hard for this, but it's not for, for promoting.
No, absolutely, so we'll keep an eye out for that. Um, I can come by and extend invitation, or if you wanna extend the invitation um to them. I'm okay with either or, um, I will be in here, I'm not too sure when. I will be in here. Um, so, yes, I'm like, let, if you guys are on here and are watching. Amber will tell you. Um, okay, so if there's nothing else to add. We're doing great. Um, we are on item D, reports, staff reports. I have that right here.
I'll go ahead and start with staff, oh staff. Staff report, yes. Okay, so before you and also emailed to you, um, I provided the staff, um, staff report for some updates. About um the Zipbook Funding, we did receive um notice of funding. Um, so we will be receiving the funding on that, we've started ordering books already for um patrons. Um, our stargazing kits um are being shipped out as soon as possible, that's exciting. Uh, we'll be receiving two stargazing kits. Um, they're, they're pretty nice kits, um, I looked in, looked into them and I don't recall. They're, the, the pricing was up there, so um we have two nice kits that um they'll be able to, and they, actually, you can work with. We'll have to have someone that knows technology to. Explain it to our um patron, have, explain it to us, so we can explain it to our patrons. Um, so, and then we have some upcoming grant opportunities. Um, what's new to the grant opportunities here is the twenty twenty-five Lunch at the Library. Um, we attended the first session um uh learning about the new opportunities. It appears that the Lunch at the Library will start in February instead of focused in summer. So it looks like it's going to be an, a year-long program. Um, so what I, they haven't gone in depth with that, but it seems that I'm, I'm hoping it's going to be. Like an after-school nutrition program, which would be amazing.
I think I saw Colexico have something like that.
Yes, they do.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Oh, my god.
So, um, but uh the deadline on that is November twentieth. Um, and let me see, we have this um. Okay, so our reports are being turned in on time. Our California, uh, our literacy report was turned in. Um, and then our community impact report was turned in. So there's a lot of reports that are being done during the month of October. So I'm hoping that I can provide you a presentation in November. If not, maybe in January when we start really thinking about the works, you know, going into the workshops. Maybe that would be a great opportunity to provide you um an overview and that might be a nice kickstart. Um, to our planning.
I agree.
That's just thing, that just hit me right now. Um, so, um, I spoke with our I T um director today. And he said in about fifteen days, our computers at our new computer station um eh will, will. Be ready to go, so we're, we're marking the lines on the wall. Um, for that, everyone's excited for that. Um, all our items are um have, all our furnishings we've received. Uh, for literacy, our Literacy Services Center. Um, our tables just shipped out today. Uh, because um that took longer than expected and so we're very excited about that. Um, but yeah, so all our furnishings have um receiv- been received. We have a new water bottle station, thanks, um, thanks, um, thanks to our city manager, our. Um, our public services director and of course our city council. Um, that was installed and um people are enjoying it, they're, they're using it. And one of the staff um said that the water tastes good.
Oh, good.
Cause I sent out an email and said, you know, to um, to get some feedback.
Yeah.
Um, so because it is a carb, it's a carbon-filtered, a water station, water bill, water station.
Water, yeah.
Yeah, fill the station. Um, and then. Um, and then, um, are I, you know, I put little tiny things in here because it's the little things add up. And s- um, so we have um three staff that are in two small, um, they're originally study rooms. Um, but as we continue to grow, you know, uh, we need space for our staff. And so um we um purchased some some desks that flow with the library since it's glass and you can see through. And um so there, I mean, it was inexpensive if there, but Prof. Bush is a well-known brand for furnishings. Um, so those are install, our our page actually was they built those and put those in for us. Um, so everything's here. I sent out a long email to our Public Services, said whenever you can. Whatever I need to, you know, go out and find find someone to come in, you know, to um to do things. We've kicked off our cool season gardening. Um, so a lot of major things are happening in the garden right now. Um, Trustee Sotomayor had a nice um contact at Lowe's. And he was such an amazing gentleman, um, Mr. Sotomayor. Um, so we rece- he, they pro- they provided us forty percent off on the soil, the soil. And um then our um, what's really nice, this is all about community, it's about, you know, and that's, this is what's nice about our small. We're we're growing, this valley's growing, but we still have our connections, and that's our community. Um, our our master gardener, um Krista Flores, the one that was presented the cup at the ribbon cutting. She, her husband and her son brought their truck down and met with me um for the soil. And they, you know, Lowe's loaded, you know, the the. Um, oh, I can't think of. The pallet, thank you. The pallet, the pallet of soil, um, in the, I mean, it was forty-eight bags of soil. Fifty fifty bags, forty-eight was on a pallet into their truck, and then they unloaded it and they set it all out. And then the very next morning, all the master gardeners replenished the um beds. And then after that, our um parks um supervisor came in. And he installed the new irrigation system, and he was very impressed with the irrigation system. And so now we have our seedlings that our master gardener has been growing at her home from seed to seedlings. And so um they're going to start planting those, and we've started our gardening classes um for, we have gardening classes for little ones. Uh, we have gardening classes in um Spanish and gardening classes in English, and they're all um well-attended. Very, very well-attended. So I look forward to growing more up.
The the pomegranate tree, is it ready or is can, is it ready for, you know, picking or?
We can look at it. I last time I ate a pomegranate was a real pomegranate was probably when I was five. I buy, I buy the Costco now.
Pomegranate picking.
That would be cute. We need to write a book about that.
A resilient pomegranate tree. We have two books coming, The Dancing on the Stand Fencing and the Planets, or what, right?
Um, and then, uh, let me, I don't wanna fail to mention our cool season seed library, the seeds, um, for. Spring, we actually purchased the seeds, um, and the master gardeners bagged them up for us, and then, of course, our library staff. Um, process everything so people can check them out, you know, so we can um keep records. But this time around, master gardeners, um, the master gardener program actually provided the seeds to us. And then the master gardeners packaged them, and so there those are all the cool season. Some seeds are ready, and there are some um rainbow carrots. I really want to check out so I can plant. So, um, and then, oh my goodness, okay, so let's really, really fast. I think I will let the two of you guys talk about Red Panda Day. I just wanna thank, I I wanna thank everyone for their support of the Red Panda Day. I think on that, um, Trustee Sotomayor's um idea, her vision of of this event. Um, provided a great opportunity for families to come and get together, um, connect. Uh, it worked out perfectly. It, uh, we, if we would have tried to plan it the way it worked out. It wouldn't have happened that way, but everything flowed where people start, went started with Storytime. And they flowed with activities to the movie, and usually people are just everywhere. So, um, um, our city manager came in and he's like, where's everybody? Everyone just kind of, everything happened, like we had an agenda, you know, like, but we just thought, you know, let's have everyone have their own time to come in. Um, and and do activities as they will, but, um, so they they had pizza, they had popcorn, they had, um. Flavored water as a. As a healthy alternative. Couldn't just give him water, but, um, yeah, and so, and for the two of you guys to come in that morning. Um, to set up the balloons and set up the paw prints.
It was great because when you set up the paw prints and I just followed what you did and then I put it through the rest. I didn't imagine that my own daughter would be coming in and following the paw prints around. Excited jumping. She had fun. She had a lot of fun.
You have to add that she was jumping from the paw prints and then she landed on the leaf and laid down.
So she 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 did enjoy it and everything, and then I, it was the success that she sat down for fifteen minutes to watch the movie. Cuz she loves to move around, but it was, it was really, really fun. She enjoyed the most was the mask. It was the mask that, you know, she loved. It was exciting because, you know, seeing her there and then the other uh people with their children, you know, they they looked like they were having fun. It was something different, so it was, that was really, really great to see.
And let's not fail to mention that it was the second Red Panda Day in all of California. There was only two, and so we did something, and I think we did something great. I think the outcome was, like you said, better than we could have ever planned. Yes, and so we were on the official Red Panda Network where this is the panda, it's it's all. It's like a toolkit. When we found out, we were, we were gonna make something from scratch, and then we stumbled upon, it's all there. We don't have to re, we were creating it, remember? You go on the website, we were almost spot on on what the items needed to be for artwork, for activities and all of that, so. We were, we were on the right track, and it just looked so beautiful, um, it was great, it was.
I'd I'd like to thank the Panda, um, Red Panda Network for providing us the certificates. To provide the children for their activities that they completed. I I thought that was really nice for for it to be a major, I mean, this, this is. That's, this is what everybody looks to. They're the major, um.
Red Panda Ranger.
Right, 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 but but the um this, this nonprofit. Is um the go-to, you know, for Red Panda um conservation, so.
And then we adopted one.
We adopted the Red Panda, yes. Yes, so we received forty-three dollars in donations, and it was very sweet, um, um, you know, I love coins.
Anything for the red pandas. It's like, mom, please. It was, I don't really, I don't even know if it was still Southern California, but it was nowhere near us. I have to look, I have to, I should have, I should have had it written down. Yeah, it will be on the Red Panda Network, yes, um, and so that was really exciting because, you know, went from idea and it was so. You would think, well, you guys aren't near the red pandas and. Or everything else is more like in the, I think it was more like in the East Coast, but nonetheless, we did our part. Um, and I feel like at the end, it's something that people are gonna wanna do, and it's information, it's it's useful. We knew a lot of facts about red pandas at the end of the day, and you know, it's just fun stuff, and it makes a lot of this, I think, um. Learning information, like my daughter likes a lot of nonfiction, so it's very useful information, so, um, it's just makes it all that fun.
And the staff was wonderful, wonderful, especially the story time. It it was, I I heard a lot of great things, like the families were very excited with Storytime. They they said they did a really, really great job with that, so. That was nice.
If you walk into the library right now with our um smart screens. Um, we have a live feed of bears right now, because this is when bears are starting to prepare to go into hibernation. So it's it's pretty exciting, um, it just has a live feed of all these bears, so. Next time you're in the, in the library, check it out. Um, we have some information, we have um a staff, some, a lot, all the staff love bears and. And they've, um, they did this last year, and so, um, they're doing it again, and and they have acti- yesterday, they made. Um, the youth, the youth um craft program was making a a bear pom-pom.
Oh, I saw that, it was the cutest thing ever, so.
So a bear from pom-poms?
You get yarn, right, and then you kind of. Oh, my goodness, so a hundred and forty times. And then you like cut it, and then it's, it looks like a cheer pom-pom, but small, and then I think you can add little eye, the the ears and the eyes, yeah. Cute, it's under our 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 social media, I think we have a picture of an example of what the activity is. If you're not following us, you need to be following us, cuz that's where all the cool people like get their information from.
So we have an amazing team, but I just, that, yeah, love watching the bears.
Yes, alright, thank you, Amber, that's, we we had a, we had a full month.
I'll stand for any questions.
I I think, I do, I don't have any questions. Alright, we're we're good, like six fifty-one, we're doing great. City manager report.
Um, nothing for me, except I I will say this, and I, I may be speaking out of school. But we had a meeting with IID because they're planning kind of a drive-through Christmas light thing. And it looks like it's gonna be at the fairgrounds over the course of several days. And I say I might be speaking out of school because I'm not sure how firm those plans are. They came to talk to us. Uh, because they thought they're, uh, they wanted to know what our concerns were with respect to traffic. And what uh what we would want them to do in terms of handling the traffic. I think they first thought of just going. Through that main gate, straight down that road that goes all the way to Marshall. And then have cars turn out on Marshall to eighty-six, and we were thinking that would be a huge bottleneck. So I think they went back and and I would say, consider this alternative. But it looks like maybe they've worked out something with the fairgrounds, so they can route it through the fairground, enter off a second s- street. At that main big.
The main entrance.
And then exit farther east, like at the stock gate or s- something. On the second street. And sometime early December, it's gonna be more than one day, so they wanted a secure location. Uh, because they're gonna have displays and they're gonna leave, they're gonna leave them up for the duration, and so they. They needed to have a place that they could be reasonably sure that it would still be there the next day.
Well, I just love that it's here. I just love that it's here. In Imperial.
Well, I think they, they, yeah, I don't know if we were their first choice, but it looks like we're their last choice.
Yeah, well, I mean, I I'd love to know the date for that, well, Alaska or Alaska.
Like I say, I'm not sure, I might be speaking prematurely, but I, um, it was, they were looking at early December and they're still. They've had, they have a couple of people who've been already spent months trying to work out the logistics. At the headquarters. Nobody at the IID says, everybody at IID thought it was a horrible idea, because just all the stuff they have going on, the equipment they have. And and having cars drive through just.
Like light show.
The whole community can participate in it or?
I I I didn't, I I, the way they described it. Uh, I don't know if any of you have attended what they do at the Delmore Fair of the Year. Static displays.
The library, possibly we could create it out of carton.
I don't know how crappy I am.
I know what I wanted to, you brought up something, I know that po- popped another idea in my head that I had briefly, I know, I'm sorry. I touched upon with Amber. Is there any way that we can display, um. Lights on the lib- on the library, uh, front. Yeah, like, um, you know how a lot of the houses do it with Halloween right now, but like during Christmas time, if we can have the front. I would say facade of the library displayed with Christmas stuff for the holidays. So that way, when people pass by at night, I mean, the front, you see the front of the library would just, you know. Um, Christmas lighting and maybe, you know, the displays, how they have sometimes the candy canes or make it look like snow is falling or something like that. If it would even be possible this year to make it more festive for the holidays.
Past years, uh, Public Services has put up lights at all city, um. I'm not sure if the public library continues to have lights put up. Dennis, do you recall if um lights were put up on in the, on Christmas lights? If Public Services um puts those up still on the library for Christmas time?
You know, they do it at City Hall, and they and they do their. I should know the answer to that, but I'm trying to recall what happened last Christmas here. I'm I'm pretty sure they did.
But it's a, the clear, the.
Just a regular light on top.
We can add the one that like you put in the ground, the ones that go in the ground and they display on the building as well. So they're like, kinda like moving images with colors as well, that way we kinda light up the library, um, for the holiday season.
We have one public service, um, I'm not sure what his title is, but he's he's really good at stuff like that. So I'll connect with him and to see if he has any recommendations.
We need to find those items and secure them if it is possible, cuz those things sell out. Those sell out quickly.
Go to Lowe's right now.
I'll be right back.
But it would just be nice, cuz you know how City Hall has it and everything, but it would also be nice that, you know, it gets dark quicker, but there's still be people, you know, wanting to go to the park. And especially on those days, and just to see, like, the library just lit up with Christmas stuff, cuz I have an idea for April and Art Week.
Maybe it's gonna be one, we switch out the little.
Yeah, I I mean, if we could do that, it's, it would be really, really neat, so, I, yeah. Okay, that's it, I promise today.
I got Isaiah's name right here.
Okay, so, um, we'll move on to item C three, President and Trustee Reports. Um, so I'll start before I forget all my. Reports, uh, so we did get to present at the, and I say we, and I don't mean it mistakenly. Um, at the City Council Meeting on, I don't even know, before Red Panda Day. Uh, me and my my little trustee. Um, presented on Library Card Month, um, and so we had a beautiful display of all the things you can get at the library. Um, like we said, we've we've talked about stargazing kits, we've talked about backpacks, um. Tony boxes, books, seeds, Chromebooks, hotspots. I'm probably missing some, but we are a library of things and we had that displayed. Alright, um, and so that was really nice to be able to, you know, represent the library, um. Show face and just, you know, reiterate to the community of what is available here. Um, and then we also got to prep for Red Panda Day, so that was fun, like I said, uh, I think we came in. Maybe four times in, or I don't even know, I lost count last month, or be from last meeting to now. Yes, Amber is besties with my daughter, and so we, I mean, we've just done, we've seen a lot of things, the library's not been empty once. Um, we've had great participation, uh, I shared about the Johnny Appleseed activity, and so even in when it's a little. Uh, you you think it's a little activity, people are still showing up, and. Even in when it's a little, you you think it's a little activity, people are still showing up, and so, um. That's great, I I don't know, I can't go back and see where we were two years ago. Um, but I do know that where we're at now is a really good spot, um, and I'm really proud, I'm proud of the whole team, I'm proud of everyone, you know, it's. Let's keep it going, um, and get through the year, and then we'll, we'll sit down and and, you know, shovel on the ground for January. But thank you, Amber, thank you to the whole team. It's a whole effort, um, and we're, we're just in a good spot. I'll move on.
I don't have anything to report, just echo the. I know, I'm the one that says I have an idea. Out of ideas tonight, so, um, I'll just, you know, reflect, uh. President, uh, Hernandez and trustee Alta Morano's sentiments, and we're really happy to see the library thriving. And we're hoping that, you know, we can continue giving the support that yourself and the staff needs to keep it. Growing, getting better, make it more exciting and, you know, seeing like the community really come out for this, cause why not? It's it's a nice ri- library and we're the oldest, we're the first.
And the whole board of of women. So, yeah, you know, that's, that's kinda what happens.
Trustee S- Sotomayor got her library card?
So, yeah, so you can still get your library card even though it's no longer library card month, um, and it doesn't cost anything. You just need to bring your proof of address and, uh, there's no fees, so there's literally nothing stopping you if you're already driving around this way. Just get it, there's so many things you can get with it, um, including those state park passes whenever that time of the year comes around, so, I mean, it's a win-win, honestly. Um, other than that, I don't think there's anything else to add or report. Thank you, everyone, for tuning in, the next reg- regularly scheduled meeting of the Imperial City Library Board of Trustees is. Tuesday, November twelve, twenty twenty-four.